I would like to welcome all of you to our St. Cloud Council Workshop this Thursday, March the 18th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Here.
That brings us to our first item. And will that be? Go ahead and state what the item is.
Your mic?
Is your mic on?
No, I told Jay I wasn't talking. Discussion Regarding Major Corridor Overlays.
Good afternoon. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This item is a discussion regarding the major corridors overlay. It was originally referred to as the US 192 corridor overlay. And through subsequent discussions, it was the desire of the Board to expand it to include other corridors throughout the city that may have similar requirements with respect to protecting those corridors. So just a little bit of background and the intent and purpose. And by the way, as you all know, this is a draft, and so we're seeking input from the Council on further direction as to how we should proceed. But the intent of this major corridors overlay is to address the concern with respect to preserving the view shed of these major roadways that run throughout the city and to promote some enhanced designs along certain segments, except for, of course, the Florida Turnpike, and to ensure that it's compatible with adjacent uses within and outside of this district. So this proposed major corridors overlay will address not only the city limits, but also areas outside of the city that includes our joint planning area and anything in between. Again, it's the purpose and the further intent is that it's limiting certain uses within 300 feet of whatever roadways we, the Council ultimately decides are in need of protection. And just to emphasize, it's to limit the uses, not to prohibit the uses. If the Council wishes to prohibit uses, we can address it as well. But the intent was to limit the uses, meaning that if a property owner had a property that's 1,000 feet deep, they could have that use not within the first 300 feet, but beyond the 300 feet away from the arterial roadways. Again, it applies to all arterial roadways within the city. And we will look at the map in a minute to determine which roadways are appropriate based on our initial analysis. Again, it's to address roadways inside the city limits as well as inside the JPA. And as said, propose enhanced design to be compatible with the surrounding areas and, again, protect the major view sheds that run throughout our city. This is a little more detail initially of what we anticipate would be applied to these major corridors. We would ensure that it's consistent with the architectural design requirements and of our non-structural architectural standards. We'd also ensure that the building orientation of the uses are facing the arterial roadway. And in particular, uses that have roll-up doors or automotive uses would not be allowed to have their service base facing the right-of-way. We also have some requirements for setbacks, that the front of the building line shall not be more than 50 feet from the arterial roadway, of course, except the Florida Turnpike, and that the rear and east side yard setbacks would conform to the underlying zoning that would be within these areas. As far as sidewalks go, our endeavor is always to have connectivity between uses and to avoid the need to go onto the major roadway to access an adjacent use or center along these roadways. So we would promote and encourage sidewalks and to ensure that there is access between buildings. And we are proposing a six-foot wide sidewalk. We probably will revisit that as to whether that's an optimal size for, especially for these major roadways, where you may want to have greater opportunities for pedestrian activity along a busy road. Off-street parking, and this kind of gets into what I just talked about a minute ago, to provide for cross-access use along these major corridors, again, to avoid the need to go onto the major roadway, and also to minimize the number of curb cuts. Of course, particularly US 192 is a state road, so obviously we would need, the developer would need to coordinate with DOT as far as getting any access easement onto that roadway. I missed something. Oh, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed fencing. And fencing is the only other thing that we will prohibit and allow for chain-link fencing along US 192. And while reading this, I realize that we also talk about barbed wire fencing, but in that instance, it's for protecting the industrial use, and it cannot be visible from the arterial anyway. So they'll have to do something creative in order to provide the protection, but also prevent the view of that type of fencing. As far as the restricted uses, these are uses that are currently within the highway business and industrial zoning districts. And I won't go through the list with you, but as I said to say, these are uses that have been somewhat problematic as far as just the aesthetics of them, especially along US 192, and to ensure that we present a pleasing view to people that visit the city. Same thing with the automotive uses. A lot of it has to do with how you design the building and the orientation of the service base to avoid seeing cars being repaired while driving along US 192, for instance. So again, these are the uses that are listed as ones that would need to be not permitted within the first 300 feet of the right-of-way. And again, further uses, body piercing, clarifying, contractor equipment, storage yards, and so on. And then further, mini warehouse also has been a challenge in the city, and this is one of the uses that we list in here as a use that we would require to be setback at least 300 feet away from the right-of-way. This map shows all of the existing and/or proposed arterial roadways within the city. So you'll see Narcoosi on the right of the screen on the north end, and then Hickory Tree going south. You have Nolte Road kind of in the middle of the screen, and then on the, sort of, on the west side, you see Turnpike and also Old Canoe Creek and Canoe Creek, north-south. Those areas that are shown along US 192, the majority of which are shown as commercial and industrial parcels along that roadway. So those are the types of uses that we would essentially be focused on, because those are the ones that would have those uses that would impact the view shed along those roadways. This is a map that is slightly different than the one you saw a minute ago in that we selected the parcels that are specifically impacted being 300 feet from the right-of-way. So you'll notice from the one before, it shows more parcels because those are industrial parcels. This one shows a little less because it's just the ones that specifically touch the roadway and are at least 300 feet within that corridor. So if, so moving forward, if we were to identify US 192 as one of those roadways that we need to address, then we would prepare mailing lists and notify all of these property owners that at some point they may be impacted by this proposed ordinance. So on the, this map that you're looking at now, there is approximately 529 commercial, industrial parcels that will be impacted as far as being within 300 feet of the road. This next is a little hard to see because now it's a lot tinier, but you can barely see on the map, especially on 192, some little colored parcels. Those are, and they're kind of an orange, kind of a yellow-orange color, those are some examples of the auto-oriented uses that are currently along that roadway. So there are a few of them. There's about 27 that we found at this point. We can, we will still continue to refine our analysis, but as of now, we've determined that there are about 27 auto-oriented uses, and that's based on the Department of Revenue Use Code. So we're just using current data from the property appraisers' data to generate these maps, but we'll go back further and do some field research to verify that information. And then, again, this is more uses. You can see it a little closer. You can see what those uses look like along 192. This map shows the self-storage and mini warehouse uses, again, that are along major corridors. And there's a couple on Old Canoe Creek and also on Canoe Creek, and then, of course, there are a few that are on US 192. And of those, we determined that there are about 10 or so mini warehouse uses spread along that corridor. Self-storage, yeah, this is the same image. I don't know why I didn't do it twice. And then the, this final slide here, just to give you a general framework of our proposed schedule, it's hard to read, but I'll read it for you. We, we're now in the month of March, and we're starting this effort, and over the next several months, we will set up a, you know, a detailed parcel list of all the affected parcels. We will also hold a public, a public meeting to discuss this further in addition to this workshop. And we will do some mailings to the affected property owners so we can get their feedback and input on it. And we have two workshops scheduled with the public, but depending on if we have sufficient input on the first one, we may or may not hold the second. And then we'll begin printed documents and begin scheduling formal meetings. We're looking at sometime in the, in early fall, so we propose to have the Planning Commission meeting in October, and then the two City Council meetings in November and December. So that's our proposed schedule at this time. Are there any questions, and we can have some discussion?
You want to speak, Clerk?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I guess a couple of questions. Is, you know, I think I threw the idea of 300 feet out there. Is that too much, too little? I mean, I went up and down 192 to try to get a feel of what's the, some of the property sizes are. You know, you as a planner, is it, do you need 300 feet? I mean, if you're thinking about, like, some restaurant coming out, let's just say an Olive Garden or something, is that the normal, do they need that amount of space before, like, if they were going to put a charter school or, or something else behind it?
Well, it varies. So to give you a sense of scale, the city blocks in downtown are 300 feet.
Oh, okay.
So that sort of gives you a sense of, you know, you can have several uses within 300 feet. An example also was the warehouse, Big Sky Storage that came before you for approval. That was, I think, once it was 400 or 500 feet deep. So that's why they kind of fell in that situation where-
Right.
-their property was deeper than 300 feet, however, 100 feet would not have been sufficient depth for them to build that structure.
And I saw on your storage unit, although I don't think they were approved, but you got two more storage units coming, one near Lake Lizzie and Nova, and the other one is the one we just approved, which was Rocker's property.
Yes.
Wasn't on there.
Now, one thing that I did bring up, maybe individually that I'd bring up again, is while we want to apply this broad brush to all uses along this corridor, keep in mind that many times you can address those concerns through the design of the building. And that sort of lends itself to more of the form-based code, where it doesn't really matter what's inside the building, it's what is presented when you view the building, driving by or walking by a building. And so when we talked about needing to have, you know, service base not face the roadway, you know, it could be a regular building that looks like a regular office building, and you'd not necessarily know that it was automatically uses there if it's designed in a way that hides those uses that people view as unsightly. So it's really, a lot of times comes down to good design of a building as opposed to the actual use of the building.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I think I'm open to that, but, you know, sitting up here and seeing things being built and built and built, and I know you're working your tail off to try to, you know, grab some of this stuff and get rid of the metal buildings and kind of things, but, you know, for years, it seems like we were just kind of like, you know, peeling out, trying to figure out what to do. So I like the idea of the, the design of the buildings, but it would just be nice to see something other than some of the stuff that's being built on 192.
I find it rather stressful going down this long list of things that we're saying we're going to limit. It's an incredibly broad brush. I certainly agree with what you've just said. You know, having a design standard so that, you know, how, you know, architecturally and how it appears, but, you know, coming up with this long list of things that we want to limit, and if they are going, they got to go beyond 300 feet, and then telling 500 property owners what they can do with their business. I think, you know, it's so easy for us to make decisions, and then we don't totally see the total impact it's going to have, and when, until 100 people file into the council chamber here and are screaming for our blood. I certainly want to improve the appearance and the professional look of things up and down these corridors, for sure. But I'm really struggling with, you know, hey, let's come up with this list, and we're going to agree that all of these things shouldn't happen on this, you know, in these corridors, and we're talking a pretty big corridor here. I'm just really finding it stressful getting my head around that. Maybe it doesn't bother you guys?
Well, and I echo this, some of the same sentiment of, we want commercial on a lot of these frontages, but then here's, here's the laundry list of what you can't do. And, and my struggle with some of this is some of these are industrial uses that shouldn't be in some of the commercial areas anyway, they should be in an industrial-type complex with the buffers that are associated with that and in areas, so, you know, massaging this. But, you know, I, I do agree that what we want to do is have site development standards that are, that are the same across the board on all these commercial corridors, and, you know, sometimes the use matters, doesn't matter. You know, some of these, these uses only make sense for 20 years, and then they move out, and then you have a good, good building, good foundation for that second-generation tenant that moves into, to something like, one of the ones that kind of came, came about from all this was the Charter School on Old Hickory, that, you know, that's a beautiful office building if that charter school ever goes away. I mean, it's well-built, it, you know, it'll be there for a long time, it probably has enough parking for all that. It's just, as a, as a school with a lot of drop-off and pickup, you wouldn't want that on the main drag, which is kind of what started this whole, down this whole path, is just some of the access management of some of the uses. You know, we had a long discussion about that on the one on Canoe Creek, of how do they get in and out when buses aren't dropping kids off? You know, we need to make sure that happens. So that was one of the things missing from this list, was trying to make sure that there are some of the site standards, site selection standards for charter schools in here. But I did, did you have any more comments before I kind of jump into mine?
Go ahead.
You kind of mentioned this a little bit of making sure that the property owners that have commercial zoning now understand the change. Is that, is there a Burt Harris claim issue if someone has a commercially-zoned property, and now we're changing what is allowed on that commercially-zoned property, or how does that work?
Yes, there's a Burt Harris claim.
Okay, so-
Whether it's, you know, whether it succeeds is going to depend on the devaluation of the property and whether the city has gone, acted inconsistent with its comprehensive plan. So if you do go through the planning issues, it's a, it's a claim that can be alleged, however, as long as there are suitable alternative issues or uses that would return the same value to the property, then that claim should be defensible. But of course, Burt Harris was put out in place to, to allow property owners a wide breadth of ability to challenge actions like this by the city. So there would be a claim in our estimation.
Okay, so changing an allowed use from allowed in that zoning district to not allowed in that zoning district, that is a Burt Harris claim?
Well, it could be. It could be, you know, there's a, there is a difference between having a claim that you can file and you can maintain and whether that claim is successful. So it would depend on what the ultimate options are for that property owner to use it to retain their value out of the property. So if they couldn't use it for one purpose, but they can use it for other purposes, that might render a similar value, then essentially they have no claim. They have no damage.
Okay. Okay. So I guess is the, is the intent of this, Mr. Anderson, to limit those uses entirely or just have these extra standards towards them, or a blend of both, or?
Well, it's maybe neither. It's really to limit the uses within the first 300 feet. So yes, if a property is only 300 feet deep, then, then I think it's maybe a stronger case for a Burt Harris in that instance. But if the property is 1,000 feet deep, they would still be able to have that use after the first 300 feet, and within the first 300 feet, they could have any of the other uses that are not listed here. So it really kind of depends, kind of side by, yeah, side by side, how onerous that requirement would be. It's really essentially applying a greater setback, if you will, for these uses on properties.
Yeah, because I was trying to go through the use table and mark it, but I already have enough markings on here that I wouldn't be able to circle everything that is being limited by this, based on what's already in allowed use or not in allowed use. Okay. There was some mention in the actual language about some of this, some of these restrictions being in, on properties that are not in the city but in the JPA. Has there, how have the discussions gone with the county? Are they willing to adopt?
We haven't, we hadn't started any discussion with the county. We need, we first need direction from you whether to even proceed before we engage others.
Okay.
So this is really to kind of get, put a foot in the water. Okay, do you want to do this? If you do, then we'll start in earnest.
And then are there other municipalities, cities, counties, towns that have similar overlay districts?
I have not completed the research. I'll have to get back with you on that, but I would imagine they do because, and it may not necessarily be setbacks, but it will be restricting how uses are done. For instance, in Lake Nona, for instance, they don't permit, at least in the, in the TND zone, they don't permit drive-throughs that are along the right-of-way or parking on the right-of-way. They have a very, a series of restrictions, such as drive-throughs, for instance, have to be enclosed, like a port of ashore and stuff like that. So they have enhanced design standards, not necessarily restrictions on the uses.
Okay, and like the town of Oakland outlaws drive-throughs as well with banks and fast food and everything, so.
Yes.
I know there's, there's code out there, I just don't know how they implement it, and just if we could talk to some of them of how it went down the path and, you know, kind of learn from some of that. I think that was most of my questions. On item 22, off-site signs, can you go through the definition of, of that? Is that billboards or is that like signage, commercial signage for that complex?
As a private use, yeah. So off-site sign, which is not permitted anyway, we don't permit off-site signs. It would be like a billboard or some sign. I mean, an example would be, you know, say, for instance, you know, Wendy's or whatever has a sign advertising Wendy's on somebody else's property. We don't allow for that.
Because with us having a restriction on frontage, if I was a equipment sales major and minor use, and I was buying the past 300 feet from someone, I would kind of need a sign out on the major road, but I wouldn't own that parcel. So I don't know how that would work if we could carve out a specific allowance if, if you are directly adjacent or part of that.
I guess, I guess you could. We can definitely explore. I mean, that's an interesting point. You know, it could be some kind of shared sign like you would have in a shopping center, for instance, because you have all those uses in a shopping center, and they're set way back, but you wouldn't know they're there necessarily unless you look at the common sign. So, yeah, we could definitely look at that.
And in that case, they're, they're tenants, so they have a lease and they have all that.
Yeah, right.
But like this, you know, there might be some uses that they would just want to buy the back, someone else buys the front, and you have to have-
I understand.
...a sign. I didn't see charter school mentioned in here at all. My concern is more on the access management side of things, so I don't know if that makes sense on here. And then in the maps, nothing was included on PD zone property, it didn't seem like, because I know there are some commercial uses in some of the major-
There is. We, we did look at the PDs. The one that comes to mind right away is the Rocker's Lockers on 192. That is part of a PD.
Okay.
And we had to kind of, that's what I'm saying, we have to go back now and actually ground-truth everything, because you're correct, there are PDs that have uses in them that may not have, you know, shown up in this initial round.
Well, like all the Stevens stuff, too. Like, that, that was just a big one that just jumped out that it wasn't on there. All right, next.
You ready?
No.
Go for it.
So a lot of good comments already. I had some of the similar ones. I was worried about inverse condemnation by changing things on the properties. I think we kind of touched on that. Regarding the signs, so this is an issue that I've heard a problem with moving the buildings right up to the right-of-way line, is the signage, you know, because they don't really have any room if the building is right up on the right-of-way line. There's no room for a sign between the building and the right-of-way. So I know at the county, they'll come and they'll say, well, I want to put my sign in the right-of-way. You know, I want my sign on Narcoosi Road. And then the county's like, no, you can't put your sign out on Narcoosi Road. And then they want to put it here and there, and you got to think about the corner clips, access, visibility, all that. So I think the solution was, and maybe that's something to think about in our standards, was that they needed to hang the sign on their building. But I don't think a lot of people, like, this is all new, right? So then the developer comes and they, okay, I'll shove my building up, and then they, no one thought about it, and the visibility, and then they wanted to do like can of levers out off of the building over the right-of-way, you know, things like that. So I think that is something we need to kind of provide some guidance, because it's new here. And we certainly don't want all the signs out in our right-of-way. I was curious, I guess, I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding this 100%, because you're saying they're not prohibited, but they're limited? So I thought that that meant like, let's say, a mattress store. Like mattress stores aren't prohibited within this whole area, but they're limited, so instead of us having 20 mattress stores, we only have two mattress stores. But it sounds like you're saying it's not prohibited on their parcel?
No.
Versus, I mean, how, explain the prohibition.
Right. There isn't any.
Right.
We're not prohibiting the use. If you want to-
Per parcel?
-set up some kind of per capita, you know, or some standard, say, we can only have three mattress factories or mattress stores in the city, that's a different discussion. This was really to protect- If you want to set up some kind of per capita, you know, or some standard, say we can only have three mattress factories or mattress stores in the city, that's a different discussion. This was really to protect the individual properties. It's not, it's not the prohibiting or limiting the number of uses. It's prohibiting the location of that use on the property.
Per parcel.
Per parcel.
This is a per parcel conversation because I'm sure all of my other council members hear this constantly, like of people upset, like that we have so many dentist's office or mattress stores or whatever, you know, Family Dollar or whatever, which, I mean, I don't disagree with that. Like I, I, you know, would like variety and not a monoculture. And I guess is that, is this a mechanism to kind of do that as well? Like we could have a conversation of, and are there industry standards or do we have to just pluck a number, you know, and say, we're only going to allow two of these or four of these?
Right, so I don't know that there is necessarily an industry standard, because standards are all arbitrary. Someone's came up with a number and everybody accepted it and it worked and, you know, they went back and they modified it and changed it again. So standards were just based on somebody starting as some trend and it's kind of continued. If the city wishes to limit the number of uses, then that's a different conversation that we can surely entertain and do some research and get some comparables of, you know, similar sized city, whatever, see what other cities are doing with respect to limiting uses. And I know this came up several years ago, it was brought up about setting up some kind of per capita number, something. Partly when we had the medical marijuana dispensary issue, that came up there. And we talked about, you know, how do we set up those type of standards to limit per capita? And then if you get over this number, then you could have another one. So that's a slightly different conversation, but we can surely, you know, proceed in that direction if, if there's consensus to, to do that, to revisit that.
So it seems like a fascinating phenomenon to me, I don't know if you guys feel this way, but it'll, it's like there's a business du jour, you know? It's like it'll be mattress stores and then it just seems like we get 10 mattress stores and then we get 10 dentist's office. And we get, we had like one car wash, now we've got four car washes. It's like, it's just, it just seems like they're, I don't know, it's like something happens and then it just seems like a really repetitive thing happens in our city where, I mean, I would personally like to see some variety. I mean, for a while it was like every new little strip mall that went up, you looked in there and it was the mattress store and a phone. It's a phone, yeah, it was mattress and phone. Every time one, you know, I was like, oh, I wonder what's going in there. And then it's like, oh, mattress and phone. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know how the other council members feel, but I, I would love to try to find some way to encourage, maybe not prohibit things, but maybe like encourage some diversity in the businesses.
But isn't that a lot of that market driven? I mean, the market determines whether things are successful or not. It's like, have you tried to make an appointment with the dentist lately? I mean, we, we talk about all the dental things that have gone up. If you try to make an appointment with a dentist, you're, you're probably going to wait two months, and I know COVID has made it worse, before you can even get an appointment. And it's driven by the market. It's just like the car washes, one of those car washes that's down in front of Home Depot, it's struggling now. It doesn't have the traffic that it normally did because of competition. You know, someone I think would be pretty foolish to come in and put up another car wash.
Well, that's what I'm saying, not prohibit, but maybe encourage.
I'm just saying that's an example.
Yeah, and I get that, and I know that's why we went from zero dentist's office to 20 dentist's office, seems like overnight. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, if there was a way to encourage, not prohibit, but encourage maybe some diversity in businesses.
There is, there's a thing called formula business restrictions. They use it in California, a lot of other states, basically so you don't have three auto zones within a mile of each other. Dan would probably know more, or maybe he can do some research on it. They, they use it in cities where they were struggling to try to get a, like a Publix or something in there and they wouldn't show up because there was five Dollar Trees and things there. So that, it's try to encourage other businesses to come in, just like we have the pawn shops. You can only have so many pawn shops within, you know, the population of St. Cloud. That's what, I don't know, it's something we might want to look into, at least it's, it's already out there, formula business restrictions.
We certainly can look into that, although I would just caution you about trying to compare general retail businesses with businesses that have a public safety element to them, like pawn shops or, you know, or medical marijuana dispensaries or pharmacies, those kind of things. Because that's, that's a little different analysis than what you're talking about in terms of why you might limit them. That's more for the protection of the public health, safety and welfare as opposed to the creation of diverse, you know, uses and marketing issue, I mean, and economic issues. But we can certainly look into what other places.
I, I would like to look into it, I don't know, are there two others?
Yeah.
Put your hands up, because every time after we have these meetings, I'll say, why aren't we doing this? And they'll say, we didn't get consensus.
I mean, I don't know a ton about it, I just, I learned about it because I was trying to do the same thing when they started to build another auto zone up the road. And I'm like, wow, how could, is there just some way to encourage something else to be built there and not to? And then of course, staff enlightens me, you know, and Keith just brought it up a little bit and it had to do with, the building's being built. The impact fees are being taken and if they don't succeed, something else will go in there. So, I mean, I try to keep that in the back of my head as well, so.
Well, and just the demographics of St. Cloud, a lot of people work on their car themselves, right? So you need the parts store there because there's an actual demand for people buying their own oil and filter and whatnot to change their own oil. So I, I don't agree with the whole, the, the California limitation on, on businesses, right? It's, it's either going to succeed or not and, and sometimes it's, the car wash succeeds over the other one because they towel dried your car, which isn't happening anymore, by the way, at the other one. So like that, you know, that might be why, like they, they have a unique advantage and someone wins out and I don't want to get in the way of that. And, you know, pick winners and losers of, well, we were just the first one here to do the, the whatever and, you know, now we chewed up all the capacity for that use in, in town. Because then they have a monopoly on it, right?
I don't, I don't know how that document is written, I would, I would.
I don't have a problem looking at it.
Right, I would assume they'd take that into consideration, we got three, so.
No, we got enough direction. You know, there's, it's the huge economic development component in what you're talking about. So it really needs to be a coordinated effort between, or from your economic development arm, planning, the legal side to try to figure out how you want to deal with it.
Yeah, to me, putting, putting restrictions across the board of all that frontage of make sure that quality stock gets built, just like, you know, the residential building standards of putting, making sure that it's quality housing being built, that helps raise the bar and that I think will alleviate a lot of the problems we're, we're dealing with on, on some of this.
Well, so my other, my last question on this item is about, you know, is there any kind of conflict or coordination or anything that has to happen between if we were to move forward with some of this overlay with the CRA?
Yes, I mean, I, I don't necessarily, there's any conflict, but it does overlap with the CRA.
Would there have to be? I just didn't know if that would open up some coordinations that had to happen or things that we needed to change inside of the CRA documents or?
We will definitely have to look into that and make sure there's no conflict, yes. If I may just add one thing, so one of the things that the EDAC, the Economic Advisory Committee, had talked about and had adopted was two, two schedules, a Schedule A and a Schedule B. And Schedule A was to look at the target industries that we wanted in the city of St. Cloud. And Schedule B was the other uses that were sort of this, you know, base uses that needed to be in place before you could get the other uses, you know, the higher uses, whether it's hotels or the manufacturing or whatever it was. And so that also plays into what, how uses show up in the city as far as is there enough of whatever it is that's in Schedule B that would then encourage the next tier of uses to locate in, in the city. So while you may see a proliferation of dentist offices, for instance, that may be necessary in order to get to that next level, which may be, I don't know, a medical manufacturing that would support dentist offices for, you know, for when they're doing, you know, dentures or whatever it might be. So there has to be a certain critical mass before you get to that next level. And so that's also part of what we have to balance.
That's, that's the, for my questions on this, but I did have something when we get done with this that I wanted to ask you guys in the workshop.
So based on the feedback, what is the board's pleasure? One, we need to define, decide what corridors and it seems that we're sort of back to 192 as the, really the primary corridor unless you want to identify additional corridors to focus on.
It's a long, long corridor.
I, I got another question, sorry. So, you know, you have mentioned the form-based code as a way to, to kind of get to the same finish line as this. So do we have that code in place to do this?
No, we do not. We started on that path and essentially had to sort of put it on hold because in trying to engage the consultant that did the same thing for the county in their CRA moving west, it was a pretty high dollar item. And so we are a bit challenged in trying to pursue them to do it. So we took, we were going to break it up into smaller chunks so we could achieve certain milestones because to do the whole thing was a high ticket prospect. So we're still trying to figure out how to do that. And just to give you a brief summary on that, that proposal was to look at theming different segments. For instance, say the segment from Partner Settlement to the canal, then from the canal, you know, Home Depot and everything, that would be one theme. Then maybe from, they have the downtown corridor, that'd be one theme. And then from, you know, the edge of downtown towards Narcusi would be another theme. So you'd have sort of this sense of place, so when you're in this area, you know where you are. You have, you know, whether it's the lighting, the landscaping. So we had plans to look at this just beyond just the prohibiting. This is really just one small portion of what we had envisioned to be a larger effort as far as design standards along that corridor.
Trying to remember the name of that firm.
Yeah.
But that, their effort on that West One and Two corridor was essentially redevelopment of a lot of those old 60s, 70s motels and try to figure out the districts of how they redevelop. Do you know who did the form-based code for Kasimi? Because I know they just updated, they just changed their code to form-based code. So I don't know if it was similar enough in nature, because it's all transect zones and all that stuff. I mean, it's a lot of the similar stuff. But I do like form-based code as an opportunity for us to get into that land development code side of things. But, you know, we still haven't updated our comprehensive plan in the last 20 years, so I didn't know if that was getting there.
It's, it's getting worse, so we'll have, we'll have an offline discussion, it's gotten worse.
Awesome, because I think updating comp, the comp plan for some of these helps, helps alleviate some of the, the rework we have to do to do this corridor overlay is if the comprehensive plan is right with some of those uses, it kind of helps the trickle down. And then form-based code to implement some of those, pull in buildings towards the street and some of those urban cores and then kind of transition out to, to rural.
So we have a statutory deadline of February 1, 2022 to produce our year and to do what, whatever updates we need to do to our comprehensive plan. So we are about to start that kickoff as well. So yes, we have quite a bit of tasks ahead of us in order to get to this form base. Now understand that some cities have done a hybrid of the form-based code and not strictly all form-based. And that's been more, more palatable to many governments rather than the strict form-based.
Yeah, would, would it make sense, would we have to do the, or should to go in the right process, do the comp plan first and then land development code?
That is preferred, yes, because much of what's in our land development code should be based on the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan, as you know, sets sort of the framework for how you then put together your implementing codes, yes.
Because I feel like with us going through the comp plan process, there has to be a lot of coordination with the county of a lot of the stuff that's coming through is, is in the, is in the GAPA and we kind of have some purview, but it's county property and we need to blend some of that, right?
The problem is timeline, I mean, you know, it just seems like everything takes so long to get approved that just, I don't know, land is just getting developed, time is sliding away, like we just, it just, everything takes so long. You know, like the residential standards, we still don't have those in place.
Well, I think the state's preempting us on some of that too.
They're trying.
Well, they're trying, they haven't, you know, but I don't know, it just seems like everything takes a real long time to get in place. Like, so if we went through the comp plan amendment and the form-based code, I mean, what are we looking at, two years?
Up to.
Yeah.
Again, much, much of this can be handled, you know, a lot quicker if there's, you can throw money at it and get done much faster. Because staffing is a, is a challenge for us. And so, you know, these are, in our view, long-term design provisions, but we still have the day-to-day permits and developments that are coming in, you know, and I understand the dilemma that we don't have the standards to protect against bad design at this point. But unfortunately, you know, the market has gotten so good at this point that, you know, we're seeing hundreds of, of, you know, permits coming in and development plans all the time that we're just so overwhelmed right now as we were two or three years ago when, when it was at the head of the market. So we got this one, what we thought was a one-year reprieve, but not really, because things were just kind of simmering, I guess. And then now that we're kind of coming out of the pandemic, things are just taking off. And, you know, Center Lake Rides is getting ready to start by the end, by the end of this year, 2022. So it's going to get really interesting.
So where are we landing here? What do you need from us next? I mean, we're, we're running all over the place.
Yes, what I would like from you is some clear direction whether we should pursue this major corridors overlay. And I'm sort of sensing that you do, but then there's some concern that you don't necessarily want to prohibit uses and you're concerned about Burt Harris, which of course is a clearly very valid concern. And looking at maybe design instead of prohibiting, I, I just, that's my sense that I'm getting, but I just need to, I guess, really pose it to you, where do you want to go with this? Because it will involve a lot of staff commitment to start doing all the research and making sure that we come with a product that makes sense.
Well, I think I've stated my, I have a change, I, I have a problem with all these, coming up with these lists of everything we're going to prohibit. I certainly do not have a problem with what can we do to raise our standards so that, you know, the things that are done in the future are done with quality, better quality, better, more attractive. But again, I just, the market ends up determining what goes and what doesn't go. I certainly like what you were talking about, trying to, you know, look at some areas where you say, this is what ought to go here and being more specific there, but, you know, like this whole corridor, that's all, you're talking a long.
Might I suggest then we look at maybe diving deeper into the non-residential architectural standards and maybe include some more specific provisions for major corridors, but not necessarily restrict uses, but provide for enhanced design standards for certain uses in those corridors. Maybe that's the way to go as opposed to creating a whole new overlay, just simply because the architectural standard applies across the board. It's not any particular overlay, just simply put more standards in the non-residential standards. And we already had on our list to sort of create a industrial set of standards right now. Because what we're looking at is looking at, the non-residential architectural standards were mostly initially designed more for an urban, like a downtown setting. And so we have, you know, suburban shopping centers and we have, you know, the mom and pops for, you know, as well. We have industrial uses, but we have this one code for all of those. And so maybe we look at creating some sections of that code that says, here's the industrial standard. And so maybe we look at creating some sections of that code that says, here's the industrial standards for non-residential, for architecture. Here's the standards for maybe suburban centers. Here's the standards for mixed-use areas. Here's the standards for downtown and so on. And do that instead rather than apply to any specific corridor. That would be my suggestion.
I like it.
Yeah, I'm good with that. But what are we talking timeframe?
If you open the coffers, we can get more money and we can hire consultants and we can get this done much faster.
Yes.
That's what I was going to suggest, to let us sit down as a team and I'll come back with a finance plan. I, we have the money to do that, to expedite this. I hear you guys loud and clear.
I I have a question for the, for y'all. Have have any of you been getting complaints about colors that businesses paint themselves lately?
The only complaint I've ever gotten on that was when they painted that car wash.
Well, there's a new one. There's a new one in town that I've gotten a bunch of complaints on. So the car wash was, you know, it hurt my eyes. And then the, then there's a new business in town that has painted a very vivid color. And so then, you know, you know, you're saying architectural and commercial standards, could that encapsulate?
Yes.
That, that, and so I guess I don't really know how you would control colors of paint. Like it's an existing building. It's been there twenty years. They went, they went to Home Depot, bought some paint and painted it. It's not like that gets an approval. I don't know how, I don't really know how that would work then to control it. But yeah, like I would, I would love if we could do something kind of to have a palette of colors or something.
We're setting up a city H O A.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's why I'm like, I don't know how you, I mean, I could see like when the building comes in and it's brand new and they submit the plans to you that you could comment on the paint color. I just don't know how you do it. You know?
Well, it it becomes a code enforcement issue, which means that you have to have a good, no, you have to have a good preempt education thing and so that people know that before they can simply go out and paint their building, that and go buy paint at Home Depot, there, there are some codes they have to follow. Paint colors have been, are for certain types of uses, have been in place for decades and they are enforceable.
In the city?
Not in the city, but throughout the state.
Winter Garden has them.
I believe, God, it's been so long since I've looked at it, thankfully, because we haven't had a lot of services. But I think your adult entertainment code language actually has a paint color requirement in it. I haven't looked at it in a while, but there is, there was some, some fairly well-vended, vended language relating to, you know, pastels versus bright colors and things like that. That's, I think that's in your, in that part of the code on a particular use basis. But it's been a while since I've looked at that because we haven't had to deal with it. So, but you can do that.
So our non-residential architectural standards already has provisions for color. It talks about a, a, a second, a primary and complementary secondary color. And it says you can't have, I think it says fluorescent colors. But it doesn't, talks about the value of the colors, that, you know, earth tones versus, you know, warm colors or whatever. It doesn't speak to that level of detail.
Well, maybe we can beef that up a little bit.
Yeah. It it looks like Mr. Askew knows the building I'm talking about.
Yeah.
He's a color guy.
The chicken, chicken place. Yeah, when we went to Winter Garden and council came, this is six years ago or whatever, they handed us a pamphlet. And in there was the suggested colors for, and this happened to be the downtown areas. But yeah, they're, they're out there. I mean, they're specific swatches. The Secretary of the State's book has specific colors in there, so.
That's for, yeah, for historic buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just speaking of that. That's the only thing I know.
Our CRA master plan includes a set of colors, preferred colors in the CRA. So that particular venue might be, I think it's in the CRA, so we can definitely visit that.
Yeah.
It's similar to another pizza place. I, I went up the same day and looked, took pictures and.
So are we really clear?
I'm clear. Well.
But.
Councilman Matheny said yes and.
Yeah, when he said to try to get some help. No, no, no. He's talking about getting some help with consultants.
Right. And Bill said he would, he would come back to you with the.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm a yes.
Do, do we have a priority of what? There, there's a lot of planning elements that are out there. Comp plan, land development code, this, if we do an overlay, the, what was the thing you mentioned?
Residential design standards.
Formula business restrictions.
Formula business, like, is there a priority list of of things that you guys will put together of what you?
I think that's what the exercise and include. We'll go back and look at that within the next couple of days and and come back with something and to show you this is what the priority and put some timelines to it.
And is there a way to accomplish some of, some of this, the major corridor overlay with tweaking some of the code in professional highway business, neighborhood business? To try to, because we talk about form-based code and pulling things up to the street, but, you know, highway business, the front setback is twenty-five feet, so. They couldn't even if they wanted to pull it up close to the road. It's minimum setback of twenty-five feet. So it's, things don't jive with kind of what direction we want, but what the code is currently, so.
Yeah. So if you don't mind, if you would give me your list of things that you want us to look at, we will definitely see where they fit within what we're already doing. Because we have been encouraging and when we review plans, we do ask the developers to move the buildings closer to the road and so on. So we have been doing it, but it's not necessarily in our code and they've been complying. Because that's been the, you know, the latest trend. And just to your point, we, we look at examples, for instance, on, on, on seventy ninety-two in Maitland, where they have that whole corridor of uses, you know, entertainment uses, and they're right at the street. But what they have is they have these large sidewalks that are ten, fifteen feet. So there's enough area for folks to walk and, you know, spill out from their different venues without walking to the street. But seventy ninety-two is a fairly busy road. It's a four, you know, four-lane divided roadway in some segments. So that's very similar to one ninety-two. So it could occur on one ninety-two as far as uses being right at the street and not having the need for signage in that area, but on the buildings themselves. So it's been done.
And I just had coffee at that Starbucks there, the new one in the Maitland Center. And you couldn't, I couldn't even have a conversation outside with how loud the traffic was going by. So it's, it's one of those, it's, it's nice in theory, but like actually sitting outside, it just wasn't enjoyable with like the dust from the street get kicked up in your face. And like you literally couldn't even speak. We just had to stop talking when some of the trucks went by and then start talking again.
I can tell you, I represent the, my friend represents the pizza place right on the opposite corner of that Starbucks.
I love that place.
Medici, yeah, they're, they're great people that own it, too. The, but yeah, you sit outside there, it's a very difficult spot to be. There's a lot of traffic through there.
And I feel like that's one night, too.
And it's very, very close to it. And, and we actually worked with the city of Maitland on it, though. Even though they'd set up these beautiful things, there was a big battle about even being able to allow the seating out there. So, so it's great. I think that if, if you want to look at that, I do believe that's a really nice little design place they've got there. If you go back around on where the city hall side is and that little strip that they call, they call it like, I forgot what it's called. It's called like Event Way or something like that between the city.
Oh, the street they can close off?
Yeah, they close off. And they've got businesses there. That's a really, that's a really nice use and it works out very well.
Except they're all vacant.
Well, not anymore.
Oh, really? Okay.
No, no, they got a, they've got a bunch of other stuff in there. It's kind of, it's kind of near my house, so that's why. There's a brewing company up there. That's pretty cool.
I think when this conversation was brought up some years back, too, we were talking a little bit about Nolte Road. There's nothing we can do about Nolte Road, bringing commercial to that, or is it's all going to be housing along that road?
So the uses that are there right now are permanent residential. So it would be an amendment that would need to occur to either designate or redesignate the future land use map to say these are going to be commercial. And we have not had any appetite from the property owners that own those properties to do that. So it'd be a little difficult to say you're not going to be commercial. And I've learned this from talking with developers, that obviously with the market, developer will get a lot more for their land for residential development than they would for commercial or industrial uses. So that's part of the challenge. But interesting enough, that was a conversation we just had yesterday with the EDAC to talk about how we ensure that we try to capture opportunities for non-residential uses along Nolte, given the fact that the interchange at Nolte and the turnpike is now on the drawing boards to be constructed. They're letting it, I think, in twenty twenty-two. And then right, right after that, they'll start the design build. And I had a conversation with them just recently and that's scheduled to probably be completed somewhere between twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight. So it's a few years off, but they're actively moving forward.
The other thing that occurred is the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee reached out and tried to have a meeting with all those landowners. And I think only one showed up. So they've just done different approaches and attempts to get these property owners to change their ways.
Well, I've talked to a few of them. They're not very happy about us trying to tell them what they can and can't do with their land. Very touchy about it. And I understand.
I do have one follow-up to it. So is part of the direction to move forward with some plans similar to the overlay that, that Andre has been talking to you about today? To see how far we go with it?
No.
No.
More form-based, more form-based.
My, my point is if you're going to have anything that ultimately might restrict the types of uses that are in this area. And if that's a direction to staff, then that's fine. As you recall, last time when we addressed an issue, we relied, the staff relied on the general common law theory of pending ordinance implementation to essentially hold off on applications that would theoretically be contrary to the potential restrictions of the city council. So we need to sort of work through that. And if that's not the intent of council, then that's fine. We just, I think, I think staff needs some direction on it. We'd actually drafted a ordinance that would codify that provision of the common law into the city code. So that whenever the staff, council had essentially directed staff to work on a zoning provision that might ultimately change the uses. There would be this provision in the code that would allow for basically applications to be placed on hold and staff wouldn't have to accept them or review them. So if that's a direction of the council, we certainly think that's the more prudent way to do it if you're going to go this route. If you could go with this idea of maybe restricting some uses. And if you're not, if you want more information on it before you do it, that's fine. But for today, you may not be at a point where you can give direction on that and may want to wait until you have consultants on board to be able to do that. But I think staff does need to know that at some point.
I, I'm fine with holding off on implementing anything until we at least get through multiple steps of the process and we know it's, it's solidified. Because some of the stuff just kind of moves all over the place as we, I guess, negotiate through it. And I'd hate to hold someone up and then let them go again. And that almost is worse than just not doing anything.
Okay.
So it just got muddy.
Just?
So I was going to leave this meeting today with the understanding that we are abandoning major corridors overlay.
That's what I thought.
In its entirety. And we're going to look at the revising and enhancing the existing non-residential architectural standards. Which does not prohibit uses. It just talks about architectural requirements, whether setbacks, color, massing, scale, those types of things. And we're going to look at adding provisions for specific types of areas, downtown, industrial, suburban centers and the like. That's what I thought we were leaving with.
Me, too. That was my understanding, too.
Me, too.
Okay.
You know, there are a couple of things on this list I wouldn't want to have to approve in adult entertainment.
They can only be in industrial, anyway.
Yeah, we have restrictions.
I four, zoning or whatever.
I three, yeah.
I three.
Okay.
But to answer Mr. Manzares's question, I don't like enforcing a code that isn't code yet.
Right. And so I guess to his question, you're saying no.
But you're also bringing up enhanced architectural standards. I wouldn't want to enforce those until those are actually adopted.
Understood.
I, I personally like the way Andre does that. I've seen him in meetings where he tries to get the best product that he can out of each application, whether if it's a little bit more enhanced than what's in the thing, that's great, too.
We try. We try really hard to go above what's in the code because we realize that it's not optimal at this point.
It's a very nice way to say it.
So are we clear now?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anything else we want to address on this topic?
Not on that topic.
Can we take a break? A beat break? I need to take a break, too, so. Six, five minutes?
I was gonna say.
Seven minutes break?
Try to put together something and start ticketing folks because signs don't work. We all know it's enforcement that works. So I just wanted to kind of see what everybody else was thinking regarding that.
What do you mean by in town?
In the city limits of St. Cloud.
Inside the city limit?
Yeah. And, you know, there's hotspots that we all know, Lake Shore, people like, it's like a drag strip. You know, you sit on a state street, you know, I visit friends on state streets and you just sit there and watch cars, I mean, just fly by ridiculous speeds. So I think we just need to, I would like to see us start enforcing the speed limit around the city.
I think, I think our chief would be arguing, he tries, he is doing that.
Well, I'd like extra.
What would we do differently?
More. I mean, just go talk to them and say, we want more speed enforcement within the city limits. And, you know, he can give us advice on how we're going to do it and how he's going to pull the resources. But I personally, I just think, you know, people are driving just way too aggressive and too fast in town. And, and we, I, I don't ever see anybody pulled over. Like, I don't know if you guys do. So that's just my two cents. I'd like to see if, you know, at least two other council members would agree with reaching out to the police chief and doing some targeted speed enforcement.
I'm, I'm good with, I would like to have Chief Gauntlet come and speak on it as well. Because he usually has a pretty good insight of what's going on.
Yeah.
And make sure we have a good understanding of the challenge that we're, we're facing there.
Well, I think it's important.
But I certainly want to see it done.
Yeah, I think it's important to move forward with it that the council is supporting the police department. Because, you know, it's going to start, people are going to start backlashing against the enforcement. But I definitely think it's a life, safety and welfare issue in, in the city.
Well, and if someone complains about getting a speeding ticket, it's like, well, were you speeding? Yes.
Yeah.
There you go. It's not like we, what was it? Stark was famous for sixty-five mile an hour road, went down to thirty-five with no change and then it came back up. And I mean, it was a speed trap, like, what's that?
Lady Lake.
Lady Lake, too? Yeah. Because I think I've gotten a Stark speeding ticket before.
I probably played about five tickets in Lady Lake, going from Gainesville to Orlando.
Everybody knows about Lady Lake.
Yeah. So just, it's not like we're creating a speed trap. It's.
No, I don't want to create a speed trap. I, I just want to do, you know, I really want to focus on enforcement.
And I think Florida and central Florida is the number one pedestrian, you know, I mean, it's.
Central Florida is the deadliest place in the, in the United States for pedestrian and bicyclists, so.
Have you, have you ever been to one of the, one of the speed enforcements for pedestrians where they set up? And they'll have these big signs. The signs are flashing, says, warning ahead, we're pedestrian, crossing and being, and people will steal. Somebody will step into it. And then they step into that pedestrian, you've got to stop. And they'll still just speed through. And you've got all these flashing signs warning them. It's the craziest thing I've ever seen.
And they'll even be in their police uniforms in the middle of the crosswalk. People are zipping around them and stuff. So I just, I just think, you know, to me, it's like signs don't work. The little speed thing, recording people's speed doesn't slow people down. I think they race it.
I, I think it helps some.
So. So.
But I don't think it is a cure-all by any means.
So we can give the city manager direction to reach out to Chief Gauntlet and come up with a plan.
Go for it.
I will do it.
Thank you.
Anything else from any council members at this point? Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. In front of you, I put a document. It's a synopsis from Gray Robinson, our, our state and federal lobbyist. I'm proud to tell you that Doyle Bartlett called me yesterday and emailed me. We are going to be receiving $8.4 million from the American Rescue Plan. The way the money will be allocated, there's a list on page two. I've got staff working on what that allocation recommendation would look like once we received the first allocation. So we would get 50% of the money. And then within, within 60 days, once it's certified, the Treasury Department has 60 days to provide that money to the city. And then funds have to be spent, that then in 12 months, we'll get the other half, and the money has to be spent by December 31st of 2024. What I'm asking for, is he told me things may move very quickly, and it says here, to receive these allocated funds, state and local governments will need to submit a certification signed by an authorized officer. And I'm requested to be that authorized officer, because like you said, this thing may happen in a couple of weeks, and we may not have time to bring it back to council. Now, with that said, the allocations would come back to council on how we allocate that money. I can tell you right off the bat, some of the money with the special leave award, the keeping people employed, some of those things are eligible, that we could backfill that money that we've already spent. And then there's some nice infrastructure projects. And he also informed me that there's going to be some significant infrastructure bills coming in front of the Congress, and water, water and sewer stuff, too. So he's keeping his eye on that, so.
So, is that an issue that has to be approved at council, or is this something we can do here?
Well, I think you can give them consensus, but we'll have to look at the form to see whether, what we need, what the authorization means, before I can tell you. It may be best to have a formal action done at the next council meeting, just to be sure.
Okay. Just do that.
Depending on what it says, I'm, I'm fine with you or the mayor if it has to be an elected official or whatever. A lot of the mentions in here are towns, so I don't know how, how they're going to.
Interestingly, we're actually considered a metro city now, according to this definition.
Because we're over 50,000, right?
Yeah, I think you, someone needs to talk about how the allocation is done.
That's what I'm saying. Why did Kissimmee get 18?
Well, I, I did look at that, and, and that's another thing. Once I get more information, we'll go back and look, did we get ripped off or not?
Is it population, and they're using the 2010 census or something?
Well, but if you look at some of the towns, some of the towns are getting significantly more money than, than St. Cloud is, even though they're presumably significantly smaller.
Yeah, we're in the lower, the lower half, for sure.
What's that expression?
Is there any?
Look a gift horse in the mouth, but maybe ought to look at. I'm Greek, I can say that, because it always gets.
So how do we address that?
Gainesville 34.
I think you just need more information, which I think you can try to, try to get.
So what we needed to do, Mr. Manzares, for the next meeting, do we?
Well, well, well.
I know it's vague. I'm just concerned that, like I said, if it moves quickly, I don't know what that means. It could be three days, it could be three weeks. I don't, I really don't know.
Well, I mean, there's two ways to address it. You can, I think the, the council has given you enough consensus to basically move forward. So it's, in theory, if something came down tomorrow, I think you're appropriate having you sign off on it, or even the mayor signing off on it, as Mr. Trace has suggested. And if you have to, we can bring it back to the city council for fi, for a final approval at the next meeting, just a ratification. It, it's tough to decide, because I'm not sure what the authorization is going to say, because you don't see what are you, what are you author, what are you certifying or authorizing to be able to do it. And it may be included that it has to be authorized by the, you know, by, by the mayor. And it may say that, so I don't know. So I think we can move forward with it. But I think the key is you want a direction, so we want to participate as full as possible in this program.
Well, I think we certainly have an agreement that we would agree with his recommendation, that it be the city manager, because he's, he's right on the front of that all the time. There are no objections to that, are there? So move forward with that.
All right, thank you.
If we need a formal motion, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Nothing else?
Did we, did you want to get through the workshop list?
We could. May I maybe be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, thank you. We reworked the workshop based on some things we had to move around, as I told you at the last council meeting. Because of the email malfunctioning, we didn't get a chance to do the technical review of the police fire and parks and rec impact fees, so we moved that to the April 15th meeting. The ethics training is on 4/7 and 4/29. Then at 5/20, we'll be following up on some of the annexation discussions we've had, and metro forecasting software. Andre, could you give a brief overview of the metro forecasting software, please?
Absolutely. So one of the things that was discussed in annexation was how we look at demand and where uses would be or should be located based on population centers, demographics, and resources. And so Metro Forecasting is the company that has proprietary product that allows you to do this type of analysis. And so we are in the midst of engaging them right now, and they will be coming forward to do initial presentation and discussion of their initial, excuse me, initial, I, initial findings. And then we'll come back later for the final presentation on the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I, I did miss on 4/15 the mobility fees, continuing on into June, the waste, water, wastewater impact fee financials, and the public works policy that was pulled from the 1/28 meeting. And then we get into budget season, followed up with the metro, final metro forecasting software, based on the data that's collected by that company. Code enforcement overview discussion, that's something we've wanted to do for over a year now, just kind of give a council overview how code enforcement process works, from enforcement through the special magistrate. And then the one thing that we've postponed for over a year now, again, is the TWA joint workshop. I can tell you right now that the, and probably many utilities teams doing an excellent job. We are working and partnering as directed by the council with Toho. Got several projects we're working on with them that you'll see in the near future. And again, it's a great partnership, and we're talking about doing some more interconnect lines. And so we're trying to support each other in every way we can. So we're thankful to have Ms. Craig. I gotta tell you, she's, she's been a godsend for me.
Have we heard anything else on where we are with the potential lawsuit over the Leachette issue and?
Over the, over the Leachette piece?
Yes.
We have not, although we are, we're, we are working on an internal path that we hope will bring, bring the matter to a resolution. And, and I'm waiting to get a, have a meeting with Mr. Sturgeon and, and Mrs. Craig and Mr. Wheeler and the city's outside council on it, Tom Cloud. We're trying to get that coordinated. It, it would involve a further review and, and evaluation of the Leachette material that was in there with the, with the possibility of trying to work out a resolution with Waste Connections that would not involve the city spending, paying $10 million, frankly. So that's what we're working on. Hopefully I can have something, we can have something for you soon in the near future, and we may have to work that through. So, but I can't, I mean, I'm talking about, I don't have anything particular to do that. We, we actually had had a meeting set up to try to get more of staff approval on it, but as you all know, Mrs. Craig has been very busy with some other things that have happened unexpectedly. We had, you know, the two issues with the, with the water pipes, and then obviously the, the challenge with regard to the proposed rule, that's, and that's what's out there. Which I do have, was going to just update you really quickly on that piece, if I may. You likely were hopeful that you will see on, on the agenda next week, a proposed settlement agreement with the state with regard to that proposed rule, that the parties have been basically hammering out incessantly over the last, probably over the last four or five days. So.
Which rule, I'm sorry?
The proposed rule that had to do with the, with the central Florida Water Initiative and limiting of the water that was being taken out, the one that we moved forward with, and filed a petition to challenge. But we're hopeful to do that. I just received a copy of a proposed resolution or settlement agreement. Once we go through that, we're hopefully, we can have it on the agenda, and we can explain a little bit more about what it means. But I think the, the city staff and the outside council working on it have done a good job, working with all the other entities in the central Florida area to reach something that can, will satisfy everybody's needs and, and, and deal with it at the state level, too.
That's a big issue.
Yeah.
With, with respect to these items that we have pending lawsuits and those kind of things, I mean, is there a way to discuss them with council, not on a public meeting? Because it takes away any negotiating. You know, I was kind of hoping you weren't going to get too much into the details of, of that, but, you know, because I know last time, I think we had private meetings, one-on-one. I don't know. Like, it just seems like we shoot ourselves in the foot to discuss it openly. Like, what do you guys want to do? How much are you willing to settle for?
Well, absolutely, absolutely there is. Unfortunately, with regard to the Waste Connection matter and the Leachette, there is no specific, there is no lawsuit filed. And the way the law, the way the law reads is you can have a closed litigation session, but you have to have actual litigation. So there is no, there is no litigation pending.
But direction from us?
But we can't.
Has to have, has to be in a public meeting?
We can't meet privately, as privately with you as a group, as a collegial body, in that matter, because it's not actual litigation. So the only way to, that's why when we went through that the last time, when we had, that we had individual meetings with everybody to sort of give you a feel of where it is. And then we brought it back at a public meeting. That matter, we can't, because there is no litigation going at this point. So that's why we haven't been able to do that.
So when, I know, I've heard the term shade meetings. You can have the meeting in the shade. So that's only if there's litigation?
There are, there's three reasons why, three times you can have a shade meeting. One is when you're involved in actual litigation. And the second is if you're talking about collective bargaining negotiations during the collective bargaining phase, you can have a meeting with the collective bargaining team. And the third is when you're talking about internal security issues related to city facilities and structures. And those are the, and security plans. Those are the only three times. So you just had a preview of your ethics training for April. So.
Is that four hours? Is that what you're concerned?
Four, four minutes.
You just shaved off five minutes.
So, so yeah, so unfortunately, we can't. The challenge for the proposed rule, however, that is in, in a litigation state, and we could have a closed meeting session on that, but I don't, a shade meeting on that. However, I don't, based on what I've seen so far, I don't think that's going to be necessary to have the closed session meeting. We can, I think it'll be fine, because that really has been, that hasn't been a one-on-one negotiation with the state. There are maybe a dozen different utilities involved with that, so that's been a big global, you know, negotiation event that's cut to the point where it is.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Sturgeon?
No, sir. Thank you.
Andre, anything else?
One, one more item on this. I'm fine, like, I'd like to see the water, wastewater discussion sooner, even if it doesn't have to be a workshop, if we add on a workshop to an existing meeting date. Because once we do that, and we have two public hearings, and we have plus 90 days, and it just drags on forever, and there's, I just would like that adopted here sooner rather than later.
Can I look and see where RaffTilis is? I don't know where they're at in the process and get back to you on that, if we can move it up? I mean.
And hold their feet to the fire of whatever we signed up in the contract. I mean, it's.
Correct.
Seems like we've been talking about this for a year and a half. And then I would like to see a capital planning workshop at some point before our budget discussions.
So this year, you know, we are going to have a capital discussion, according to the charter. It's usually been combined with the budget process. You will see the capital stuff upfront this year around June. That's not on here, but that will be, we'll be bringing that forward also. I'm waiting for the consultant to finish the capital validation. He's doing that right now. So that's supposed to occur before the budget process, and it hasn't. I caught that in the charter and said, we're supposed to do it this way, and we're going to do that this year.
Okay, so if we're going to have some sort of discussion about that?
Yes, sir.
Before all that.
Anything else?
Came late to the party.
Are we done? Or do we need to go on, because Nassim is here now?
Okay, you may begin.
Well, with that, thank all of you for your time, and thank you for your input. And with that, we will consider ourselves adjourned.
Thank you.